Good evening, and welcome to the Putnam Valley Board of Education Business Meeting of October 18, 2018. Please stand and join me as we salute our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
I want to apologize for starting the meeting a few minutes late, a little traffic out there. And we're going to go right into, I'd like to make a resolution to approve the minutes for the work session business meeting of October 4, 2018.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, let's, with no further ado, go right into presentations.
We're going to have our annual presentations from our sophomores of their science research projects. It is really exciting to, and I'm sure it's the same for Mr. Zupan, to have this large group of students involved in the science research program. This is, is this the fourth annual presentation? I think it is.
Yeah, I think it's the fourth annual because it's the fifth year. We didn't do it the first year because I was too scared.
It's the fifth year of the program, and we're very proud of what these students have accomplished and will be accomplishing, under the guidance of Mr. Zupan.
Yeah, absolutely. So this is our, we have our biggest sophomore class. We have another 19 students for sophomore this year, so a far cry from the five we had from five years ago when we started, so, which is amazing. We have 40 students in the program this year total. We have two students currently in publication that are trying to get, that are just waiting on the final okay to get published, and we had an amazing year last year. So right now, we have half of our sophomores here that are going to present really quickly their topic in kind of a yearly call for mentors. So if anyone has any experience with research in any of these areas, or knows someone who has research experience, this would be incredibly helpful to contact myself or someone from the board that can get in contact with me, and we can reach out. So without further ado, I'll let them go.
My name is Julia Stantheon, and my topic is cardiac tissue engineering. I'm interested in this topic because it could aid in developing therapies for heart disease. I'm looking for a mentor within the Dutchess County to New York City region who works with tissue engineering. Thank you.
Can we clap?
My name is Olivia Toth, and I am interested in studying how a Mediterranean diet can help people lose weight. I'm interested in this topic since obesity is such a huge issue, not only nationally, but globally. I'm currently looking to find a mentor in the New York City to Dutchess County area. Thank you.
I'm Catharina, and I am researching feline diabetes. I'm interested in this topic because I personally have a cat that has diabetes, so I thought that this topic kind of just like came to heart. I'm looking for, I'm looking for mentors in the Hudson Valley area.
My name is Emma Silverman, and I am researching animal rehabilitation. I chose to research animal rehabilitation because I feel that every animal has their own unique anatomy and challenges for rehabilitation, and I feel that it isn't researched enough and that it should be in a lot more detail. I'm also looking for mentors from the Connecticut to the New York City area. Thank you.
My name is Joanna Rodriguez, and my topic is lymphedema and diabetes. I'm interested in this topic because my grandmother has lymphedema. Lymphedema is the buildup of lymph in the lymph nodes. I'm currently looking for a mentor in Memorial Sloan-Kettering. Thank you.
I've been looking at virtual reality in different mediums, especially gaming. I'm looking at mentors in the area, like the city, that are in that field.
My name's Abigail Louder. I'm researching fear. Fear really interests me because, as you can see, I do a lot of special effects and cosplay, which really heavily rely on people's fear responses to that. I'm looking for a mentor really anywhere because I'm doing a survey-based study, and just someone who specializes in emotion with like psychology or sociology. Thank you. Have a good day.
My name is Kayla Gona, and I'm researching sea turtles. And specifically, there's a tumor called FP shown in the picture. And I'm, chose sea turtles because I like to help animals, and I like marine animals. And I'm currently looking for a mentor dealing with sea turtles. Thank you.
My name is Brown Adorian, and I will be researching canine behaviors. I decided to research canine behaviors because animals have always, have always held a very special place in my heart, specifically animals like wolves and dogs. I will be looking for any mentor in the New York area. I am hoping for a mentor who is studying conservation and behavioral sciences, and someone who is working in the field, since I would like to get hands-on experience with these animals. Thank you.
My name is Gianna Malikian, and I'm researching drug addiction in newborn babies. This is important because the epidemic is fairly new, so there's little research in how these babies are affected in the long term. And I'm looking for mentors working with neonatal, preferably at the New York Medical College.
So again, if anyone has any, any experience with research or knows someone, that knows someone, that knows someone that does research, really, anyone can really be a mentor as long as they have research experience, and they can help these students in completing their original project ideas. So again, if anyone, if you think of anyone that fits this criteria, or may fit this criteria, is interested in it, to please email me, jezupan, or again, contact again with someone at the board. So thank you guys again for giving us time for this.
Can we make a quick photo op?
Photo op, please. Thank you so much for bringing your study to us, and I'm hopeful that you will find a mentor soon. It's, that in itself is part of the process. Looking for a mentor is certainly part of this process, and we're very proud of all of you for taking this step in your lives to go on an adventure. It's a journey, and we know that there's going to be something special for you throughout the journey. Thank you.
Great job. Good luck, everyone. At least I could understand most of their titles this time. A lot of times, I can't even understand what they're talking about, but every one of them, I would have liked to ask questions. Every one of them was interesting.
Next, we're going to hear from our internal auditor, who is Dave Moran, who will discuss his process for this year.
At least they weren't singing, Dave. It's not as bad an act to follow.
Fascinating, fascinating topics. I feel like I'm in a college. I mean, really.
Their sophomores in high school.
And of course, now we get into the really exciting stuff. Okay, I think I just go forward, right? Nope, that's not what I want to do. That's what I want to do. Well, now we're in business. All right. Grazie. Okay. It's the time of the year, or actually, I am here doing two things. Tonight, I'm presenting the most recent internal audit that we performed for the district, and I'm also here conducting the risk assessment update interviews. So I'll be providing the board with a report probably before Christmas, and then we'll have the audit committee make a recommendation for where we will go to audit next. As you're aware, under the laws 2005, we need to do a risk assessment update, and then we need to do an internal audit of selected processes recommended by our report and the audit committee. This year, we looked at the revenue and accounts receivable areas, and our objectives in looking at that were to review a period that, from '07-117 to '04-3018. And the objectives were to ensure that the overall design and effectiveness of the internal controls, that we had the compliance with the district's policies and procedures, and the applicable regulations regarding property tax processing, processing and collections. And we also looked at the policies and procedures regarding miscellaneous billing and accounts receivable. The district does do its own billing for the property taxes and receives the collections either through a lockbox or here at the district. How did we do it? The most logical way we could. We interviewed the business office staff to reaffirm what the procedures were. We reviewed the board and department-level policies and procedures, and then we looked at the respective property tax collection process, and the same thing for billing and accounts receivables. And then finally, we looked at the reconciliation of the payments and receipts to the appropriate funds bank statements. Because when you get into all this, and I won't bore you with, you know, what is a trust and agency and a special purpose fund, but you do have a lot of them, and it requires a lot of correct accounting to be in compliance with the law, both federal and state. The ratings, as you all remember, the one you don't want to see is the top one, significant issues, which means we've got some serious problems with internal controls. Needs improvement is just that. There are some weaknesses. And then the best that you're going to get is the last one, adequate slash satisfactory, and it does indicate an acceptable system of internal control and satisfactory compliance with the applicable policies. So without any further ado, the three areas that we looked at were all rated adequate or satisfactory. It is a credit to the staff. It is a credit to the experience levels of the people that are processing this, and what can I say, other than we're delighted that it worked out as well as it did. The overall recommendation is that you do have adequate internal controls over, well, that's a nice way to spell property, isn't it? Well, okay, we have typos, property tax collections, cash receipts, and the bank account reconciliations, and you should continue to exercise these controls as we go forward. But there were no, no recommendations other than keep the ship on course and make certain that we have the proper backups, and that's what you're doing. So I'll open it up for any questions, if you have any.
And, what, did the audit committee see this yet, or will they?
Yes, we did. We did. And Dave explained it to us. You know, he, like, he didn't find anything that needed fixing. So, you know, like, everything that Jill and her office is doing is exactly right.
Exactly right.
That's nice.
We know that, Jill.
Thank you.
That's great. All right. Thank you very much.
Always a pleasure. Take care.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, the next.
Next is the NISBA Convention Proposals Resolutions, and I think they're on the screen, Barb.
We have, we have them here as well?
Mm-hmm.
For those in the audience, this is the New York State School Boards Association, and the meeting will be taking place in New York City the end of this month.
Okay, so I'm never done this, so this is, you know, we're sort of flying blind here. So the first two proposals are recommend, they're sunsetting, so we just, they're just going to kind of re-up them for another whatever number of years. The Westchester Putnam School Boards Association has supported these. So number one, that NISBA opposes any legislative and regulatory mandates that would impose new unfunded or underfunded mandates. They support that. Do we also support that?
Yes.
Yes? NISBA supports legislation at the state level to hold school districts financially harmless whenever they experience the unanticipated significant loss of revenue due to tax tertiary cases, or the unexpected loss of a significant portion of the value of their taxable property. Are we in, we support that?
I would say we are certainly in support of that.
Yes.
Yeah, I think so.
And we have been.
Okay, just for three, there's a, a proposed addendum, which you don't have. So three says, "NISBA supports legislation to improve school safety by reducing access to guns." Westchester School Boards Association couldn't come to a consensus on whether they supported that or not. Oh, sorry. The amendment, which was submitted by West Islip School, says, "Resolve that the New York State School Boards Association supports all," cross out legislation, "supports all efforts to improve school safety by limiting or reducing unauthorized access to guns in schools." That's their proposed amendment. I like the amendment better than the original resolution, but it really, I don't, I don't know what will happen when this comes up for debate, but I'd like to know how you want us to vote.
I mean, I, I think the meat of the legislation says to reduce the access in schools, which would really talk about security efforts and things in school, really does not speak to gun control outside of the school system, just reducing the access in the schools. I see no reason to not support it.
Which one?
The amendment.
The amendment?
The amendment, I think, sounds really good.
Because the, the amendment as written here, the resolution recommended for adoption just improves school safety by reducing access to guns as a legislative, you know, something that's done in Albany.
Right.
As opposed to efforts to improve school safety by limiting.
Of course, the bullet.
Access to guns.
And access to, access to guns, and is, doesn't it say in schools?
Right. Limiting or reducing unauthorized access to guns in schools.
Yeah. How does anyone, how does everyone else feel?
Now, is that amendment built into the motion, or is that amendment that's going to be proposed onsite?
No, it's an amendment that was submitted by West Islip, and they haven't decided. I assume when it comes up for discussion, they will read the original and the amendment, and people will discuss and.
And you vote on both?
You vote on both, you think?
Well, you vote on the amendment, they'll vote on the amendment first to see if it's adopted, to change the number three.
Okay.
And if it's not adopted, then they go back to the original.
Okay, but in either case, either one, we still.
I don't have an issue on either.
Huh?
I don't have an issue with either.
So you would support either one?
Yeah.
Guy, yes?
Yes.
I see the notes that they anticipate it could be a split decision.
Well, yes. If you think about the Islip amendment, it's, it's a little more broad, because it says all efforts. It doesn't just say legislation.
Right. It's not just legislation.
And it's all efforts in schools.
In schools.
Yes.
Right. Proposition four, "NISBA supports legislative proposals that would allow districts to adopt an earlier start to the instructional year, with those dates being eligible for state aid." There is also a proposed amendment to that, which just adds at the end, that's it, "to adopt an earlier start to the instructional school year with those dates being eligible for state aid," and also allow for extending the school year beyond the last regent's exams.
Yes.
I'd agree with either.
Yeah.
Is one better, Fran? Is the.
I think just having the, the opportunity, the option, is really important. If you had emergency days or things that you needed to, you know.
Does that allow schools a flexibility?
Yes, it gives.
It's not saying that anybody has to, it's just gives them flexibility.
Exactly. We're still working in our contractual relationship.
Right. The current law, it says, requires school districts be in session for 180 days, but it's limited to September through June for the district to get state aid. So if we had to start even a day earlier in August, you know, it could throw us off, so.
Yeah, okay, absolutely.
Five, "NISBA supports preserving Medicaid funding to school districts." Yes?
Yeah, that's been a big question for a while, so.
Number six, "NISBA supports proposals making kindergarten attendance mandatory." And the note there says it doesn't mention funding or full daycare, which would go against proposition one, which is a legislative mandate. There's no supporting documents in here that no district has proposed, that it's only in case of funding provided, or there's nothing. There's just this. So.
I'd imagine there'd be, there'd be amendments on the floor for that one, for sure.
We hope. I think the position that we, we tell Barbara is that if there is no amendment, we might not want to support this. If they don't have an amendment about funding, we might not want to support this. That, you know, that would be the option.
But we do have, we, I mean, we do currently have full daycare. Is it not funded? It is, right?
Yes.
Yes, but it's not mandatory.
But it's not mandatory.
Right.
The issue, I mean, the needling here is that somebody could, they, the state could mandate it, yet not pay for it.
Right. And that's what they're afraid of.
Okay.
And also, maybe in some districts, the numbers could significantly increase. I don't think that would be the case in our district, but in some of our city districts, the number could actually increase if it was mandated.
Right, because they might have half-day kindergarten, or not have kindergarten at all, or, and then if they were forced to go full day with kindergarten, they would have, might have to hire a whole.
So we want to push for funding, right?
Yeah. I mean, I'm a proponent, I think six is, the age of six is a late start for requiring school. We know now, children walking in at six without a year of school are at a significant disadvantage. So I personally, and as an educator, support increasing the age of five for mandatory school attendance. And if that school attendance is a private school, or whatever, I don't care where it is, but to increase that attendance, but that's not saying this. And I'm, we are concerned with making it required, but if you only have half-day in your budget, the district has to do it no matter what.
Yes.
So unless there was some changes to the wording that would involve funding.
So support it if amended, which is what they recommend.
Right, because, I mean, because when we went from half-day to full day, the state kicked us some money for that first transition year.
Right.
But that, there's nothing to guarantee.
Right. That, that's the fear.
But it was, and it was only for that first year. And we had that larger group.
Then we had to build it into the budget, make it sustainable. That was the question.
Okay. "NISBA opposes any legislative or regulatory effort to grant tenure status to non-instructional school employees." I don't understand the 218 tenure legislation note, but they are certainly in support of opposing a regulatory effort to grant tenure to non-instructional school employees.
Who do they mean by non-instructional school employees?
It would be monitors.
What are we doing?
Or aides, and already, they've already passed. They've started to pass legislation. If they haven't already done so, that does provide for a tenure for some non-instructional.
The rationale.
There is a concern for that.
Yeah, the rationale says, "School district employees, like all public employees, are protected by a variety of legal protections."
They have section 75.
While instructional staff is protected by their tenure status and the due process rights that accompany that status, non-instructional employees have their own protections. As public employees, non-instructional staff are generally covered by civil service protections. These protections regulate issues that include, but are not limited to, discipline, seniority accessing, and recall.
Their, their contracts do protect them, and there's also what they call the section 75 hearing process, which is very similar to the 3028 process. There is a process for that, a due process.
Okay. So we're opposing that because they're already covered.
Makes it too.
I think there's enough questions with tenure as it stands.
Right. Number eight, "NISBA shall seek legislation to streamline the tenured teaching, teacher hearing process set forth in Education Law 3020A in a way that preserves due process while addressing spiraling costs and the extraordinary length of time to conduct meetings."
I would definitely support that. And I, I just want to go, can I comment quickly on seven for any of our non-instructional employees in the audience? It does not mean we do not believe they're, they are not entitled to protections, but they're, they are, as public employees, entitled to very similar protections.
In the rationale, the ending says, "Therefore, in seeking legislation to further streamline the tenured teacher hearing process set forth in Education Law 3020A, NISBA, while seeking to be good stewards of public resources, shall not seek legislative relief that goes against the fundamental fabric of our legal system and the legal rights of all citizens." So, they just want it faster and.
There's still going to be due process. We're not going to try to shortcut anything, but we should have some timeframes in.
Right.
Great.
Yes?
We support that?
Yeah.
Okay. Nine, "NISBA supports legislation that allows the date of the annual reorganization meeting to be on or before Monday following the 20th of July. Currently, it has to be before the 15th of July, and it says, "Due to 4th of July holidays, many Board of Education members are not available, and end-of-year activities, Board of Education members are not available to meet during the first 15 days of July. By adding five extra days to the current law, Boards of Education will have a better opportunity for all members to be available for this important meeting."
I absolutely support that. We've had trouble the last couple of years coming up with a date we can all make within that timeframe.
Okay. "NISBA supports legislation to exempt expenditures related to school safety from the tax cap."
Yes, 100%. And that would, I assume, mean, Barbara, that it, any expenditures related to security would not count within our tax, our educational spending.
And that's been a, an issue for many districts, you know, most recently in terms of the regulations and the advice that we get from safety consultants. These are expensive, you know, they're often expensive changes, and I think by doing this, the state is make, would be making, we'd be making a statement.
Right.
That this is so important that we would not include it in the cap.
You already know how.
Rationale says, "The, the increase of a tax on our schools has made safety a priority. The existence of the property tax cap creates a situation where school districts often have to decide between keeping important educational programs or putting security measures in place." Okay.
Great.
Okay. Number 11. "NISBA supports additional state and federal funding which would be dedicated for school safety programs, staff, and equipment." But there is a proposed addendum, amendment submitted by Kingston City School Board that adds to the end of that number 11, "School safety program, staff, and equipment," and include prevention programs directed toward social-emotional development and mental health programs.
So.
I mean, I, I think it, the amendment, the addition is important, I don't know, Natalie, I don't know what you think, because school safety program, staff, and equipment doesn't really address social-emotional programs that may be needed. What do you think?
I missed the first part.
Okay, so it says, we're on number 11. "NISBA supports additional state and federal funding which would be dedicated for school safety programs, staff, and equipment." And they want, Washingtonville wants to, Kingston wants to add, and include. they want, Washingtonville wants to, Kingston wants to add, and include prevention programs directed towards social-emotional development and mental health programs.
I wouldn't argue with that, I would say that it's appropriate.
Yes, very much so.
I think so.
I think this to me speaks, though, also to the unfunded mandate part.
Yes.
You know, don't require that we do it without seeking the funding support, which is how this is worded.
Right, we're just seeking, we're just supporting additional state funding.
Right.
And I think it would be fine.
But the funding is better than just equipment, you know, and, right.
I mean, the fact is, the most, the most expensive of the changes when you have to add staff, and the current requirements, the current regulations for social-emotional well-being include staffing that is becoming mandatory, so really, in a way, it's disingenuous just to talk about safety in terms of operational equipment, that it really needs to include funding so that we can staff appropriately for the needs that we're seeing across the board in the state.
Right, but I only, the only reason I would hope that they would clarify is, at least in what I'm hearing in the news, a lot of times the funding that they want to provide is less social-emotional health programs and more...
Now Barbara, number 12 seems to be about student health and mental health services. Is that different than social-emotional learning? I would imagine it is.
NISBA supports proposal establishing additional dedicated funding for stu-, well...
They're probably, I mean, they're probably, I mean, they're not by the same, they weren't suggested by this.
Yeah, they are.
This is not, school sa-, I mean, they're tied, they're definitely tied, but Resolution 12 really just supports proposals for additional dedicated funding for student health and mental health.
11 ties it.
Which not, is not necessarily school safety.
Okay.
Okay. Thirteen, NISBA supports legislation that would allow for piggybacking transportation services, I don't know why we would object to that. It, I mean, I read, it just means that if we're sending a child, and another district is sending a child, they can go together on the same bus, and we're doing that now, right?
We do that now.
We can do that every year.
NISBA opposes shifting financial responsibility for preschool special education from counties to school districts. NISBA opposes.
Yes, that's very important, we oppose that, because this is a, this would create a significant financial responsibility to the district if it's moved from the county.
Right, it says approximately 80,000 preschool special education students receive services at an annual cost of about 1.4 billion. The county share of the cost is 40.5%, amounting to 567 million, but that would have to be shifted to school districts if they didn't move it forward.
That would be a huge, I mean, that would be a huge hit for us.
Huge, right. Fifteen, NISBA shall pursue an amendment to penal law Article 240 entitled falsely reporting an incident to criminalize falsely threatening use of a gun or making threats of mass violence on public school property. Yes, right. NISBA supports state legislation that would allow school districts by vote of the school board the option to hold their school district elections at publicly accessible locations within their district boundaries based on security concerns.
Yes, yes, and yes.
And it was, the proposal is that it should say, the only change is that it should say...
School district boundaries.
School district boundaries.
Right, okay.
I mean, Westchester School Boards Association wants it to say school district boundaries, as I guess district boundaries, town lines.
Could be any place.
Could be any place. So with that fix in the text, we would...
Yes, I mean, I know even our staff have certainly been concerned about voting on election days, not even just for the safety purposes, the parking, the taxing of the buildings, you know, it's not a lot of space.
And this is, like, our school board election is different, no, this is...
No, I mean, the, I know they're not the school board, I mean...
Oh, they're school district elections, right, so national elections, this doesn't deal with national elections.
Right, this is just for budget and school board proposals. I don't know, I mean, I'm not against it, I just don't know that we would want to do it anywhere but somewhere in our, one of our buildings, unless we had a real issue.
I would, see, I think it should be at either the firehouse or the volunteer, or the ambulance court. I think the tax, I had so many phone calls the day after Election Day about the taxing from our staff of parking now that the business office is at the elementary school. It really, there's just limited, and the buses, there's limited space, so I, I'm just throwing out those two ideas, but there are public buildings within our grounds, those two being two, the senior center being another, I know I vote for my national election as a Cortland member, I vote at the local senior center. So I would...
I would allow, I would allow board members, boards to decide.
To decide, right, but allow it to be a possibility.
That's all it's saying.
And if that's the conversation that we want to have, we can have that conversation.
We could then have it as an individual's.
Yes, that's all it's saying.
Number seventeen, NISBA supports legislation that would substantially increase the earning limitations for retired police and other law enforcement officers who are serving as school resource or safety officers.
Yes.
I mean, they're a really good source of those...
Good, seasoned people.
Right, you know, usually, they've had their own children, they're fairly, you know.
The issue being that they're...
They have a limit of what they can earn in the state.
Because of their retirement.
Right. Due to their training background and experience, they are highly sought out to be hired by educational institutions for their unique role in preserving order and promoting safety within the school community. Currently, there's a cap of $30,000 a year on the annual earnings of school resource officers and school safety officers.
I can support that.
Yeah.
NISBA supports legislation that would require the SMART Schools Review Board to meet monthly and promptly acknowledge, review, and act on all school district submissions. I guess there have been problems.
Sounds like Half-Hollow Hills School Board is having a problem with it.
Every time I see Jill nod her head vehemently, I say, whatever Jill is nodding her head about, I say, yes, clearly, this is a time...
Yes, when we submit...
Sucking process.
This is about our bond, this is about our bond that we submitted quite a while ago to, to upgrade technology and so on in our schools, was the money that we were receiving from the state that we did not have to.
Are we having issues drawing down for our work?
No, it's a very long drawn-out process.
It's a drawn-out process.
To, to access it and get it back and submit everything, and they want very detailed information to start with, and then they took so long to approve everything that when we're ending up using, you know, having to go out for other things, and now we have to reapply and get approval for that, so the process is, wasn't ideal to start, and it's taking longer than we'd like it to.
Presently, districts across the state which have followed all the guidelines and have submitted their plans in a timely manner are paralyzed, waiting to hear back from the SSRB. Districts are provided with little if any information regarding the status of their applications, and any interim cannot plan for their future. Okay, so Proposal 19, 19 and 20 are, they're proposed, not recommended for action, so when we agree, we're agreeing that we don't think they should do this, double negatives, I don't know, it gets confusing. Anyway, all school board members complete at least one required training session on cultural competency, inclusive of, but not limited to, the examining of and strategizing about formulating intentional actions to address disproportionality in the educational workforce and in student outcomes as it relates to diverse backgrounds.
I don't, I, go ahead Barbara.
There is an insert, which is really long, but it basically says that NISBA will develop training focused on cultural competencies, encourage school boards to invite discussions with students, parents, and staff, take an active role in collaborating with other groups including, but not limited to, New York State Board of Regents, NICID, and other members of the Educational Conference Board. So the amendment is really that, instead of...
Adopting this resolution.
Saying, no, no, because, instead of, well, it's saying we shouldn't require training, but we should, I think we should encourage.
Encourage, it shouldn't be required.
That's the difference.
That's exactly it, encourage.
So, supporting the amendment, supporting the proposal is not supporting the resolution.
Right, supporting this proposal says we do not agree that all school board members complete one required training in this field, however, we would support encouraging programs that allow districts to do this.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, I mean, I personally would support that, but I would personally, we have to do the required training on money and fiduciary things, I don't think it would be so awful to do a training on this, but I don't like how many things they threw into this, they're talking about recruitment, they're talking about requiring a lot of things, the very detailed proposal, I would be much more comfortable just to require one training and cultural competency, call it a day. This says too many things, and I think they could start adding, assuming we're not looking to recruit people that are similar to our student body, so I'm okay with...
And recognizing that if you do this, I guess all school board members would mean, if you're already a school member, board member, you have to take this new training, and then new people, and the new people training can be extensive if they add another course or two to this.
Okay.
Okay.
Explain this 20 to me, it's confusing.
Twenty. NISBA supports legislation that changes the date that a student is eligible to attend kindergarten to September 1st of the school year the student turns five, with the option for a superintendent waiver if the student will be five before September 15th of that school year. Currently, it's December 1st, at least that's what it says here in the rationale. Students under the age of five are often not ready emotionally and/or academically for schoolwork before they reach their fifth birthday. Although parents have the option of holding the student back until the following year, many preschool programs are not available if the student is eligible to be in kindergarten. So this would allow five-year-olds to be in kindergarten.
What's their rationale for not supporting it? Because I would actually, more and more, I see the benefit to having a September 1st.
Well, I think the problem is that they, I think it's not, it's not with the beginning, it's with, wait a minute, I read it somewhere here, wait a minute. The committee expressed concern about making the superintendent responsible for waivers, which could regularly call upon superintendents to decide who and why an exception is in order, and would almost certainly guarantee conflict with anyone who might disagree with a waiver decision.
Right, okay.
So I think the reason they are not supporting it is because that they're giving the, really the weight of it on the superintendent.
For a two-week period, which would just be arbitrary and crazy.
Yeah, that's what they basically said.
Okay, so if they come back next year...
So we are not supporting them.
Nope, if they come back next year to change it, I'd support it.
Right, or if they change it then, my understanding, because there are also, like, really interesting things going on that day, this is from eight until they're done, there's no end time, so you have to be there to vote, so I will be there at eight, and I know how we said we're going to vote, I'll take notes and bring them back.
And sometimes all, things change very differently than what these are.
Yeah, because other people, you can make an amendment right there and there.
And they can change everything, or make it better or worse.
Okay, all right.
Okay.
We trust you.
And you know how we, we've just spent a lot of time on this, you know how we think. All right, and it's the 28th and 29th that weekend?
Twenty-six?
Twenty-six, twenty-fourth and twenty-seventh.
Thursday, Friday, Saturday. This is Saturday.
Yeah, it's Saturday morning.
The mode is Saturday.
Okay, adoption of district goals, so...
Are we going to show them again?
I don't think so.
But I do want to mention that I...
Go up there and mention.
I will be...
Dan, could you, Dan, do we have to call you Maureen tonight?
I don't think you'd like that.
I need skates for Dan. Or longer arms.
All right, so we formatted these a little differently, but the main point I wanted to make here was that this, these are the district goals, and there'll be another format on the website, which include each of the schools' strategies, initiative to meet these goals, because we depend upon the schools to, to actually create those initiatives that will reach the goals that we seek. So one goal that I will want to add, and I hope that you can, I don't have it on this sheet, but I hope we can adopt it with the understanding, that I will be adding a goal, which is to recruit and appoint a middle school assistant principal who will support the principal in leading initiatives to promote student academic achievement and social-emotional well-being. So there will be an added, didn't have that at the time, so if you could adopt that with that amendment.
As amended.
As amended, yep, thank you. And that will say that in the resolution. I will indicate that I will. We have no students tonight. Okay, does anybody, and we had a long conversation about our goals last week, we've all gotten, last meeting, I'm sorry, I apologize, last meeting, we've all received a copy, they will be available once they are adopted on the website, as well as the specific school strategies, any need for further discussion at this time?
There was just one, I just wanted to make sure that people understood the theme, and I went over that last time, but that the theme of this year's goals is to, the transformation of the student experience, and that as we think about what we're doing in the classrooms and in our schools, our facilities, and so on, how do we create a welcoming learning environment where relationships are nurtured, accomplishments are celebrated, and all are empowered to learn and grow, so that was the theme for it.
And they're certainly in line with what we've talked about at meetings, so, okay. All right, I'd like to open it up on public comment of any of the listed agenda items. We have no student representative reports, we do have a superintendent, however, so...
I think we have the curriculum.
Do I have to go first?
Am I first? Okay.
On this one, you are, usually not.
All right.
You're it. Would you rather Jeremy go first?
Um, no, no, it's fine.
Okay, go ahead.
I'd like to start with just making sure that we talk to the public a little bit and mention to the public that we did learn recently that we had an HVAC problem at our middle school, and that we have two major pieces of equipment there to provide for...
Elementary school.
Hello, I'm sorry, did I say?
It's the elementary school.
At the elementary school, that would, if one of those, one more of those goes down, we would have a major emergency in the school, we couldn't really run school in cold weather. So we are, because of the fragile nature of this piece of equipment, we have determined that we need to apply for an emergency request to the state for state aid and approval to go ahead with this project, with the notion that we would receive significant aid for the project because it is an emergency proposal. Jill, maybe you'd like to talk about what we've been doing, because there's been quite a bit of work behind the scenes to make this happen.
Okay, we, we put in a letter of intent with the state as of right now, waiting for their approval, they've given us a project number, but they're still going to review the architect's report and plan before they can absolutely say that it's deemed an emergency. All I can say is that by the next meeting, we should have that information, so I'll be able to, you know, further, you know, give further details about it. It is a project, it's, it's under $100,000, but certainly something that we'd like to receive aid on and not just have to take out of the budget, so if we can get that aid, we'd be happy to get it, and hopefully we... We'd be happy to get it, and hopefully we will.
So, this is, I think this is very proactive in order to prevent something that could occur to actually hold back educational processes.
That's the cafeteria, or the gym.
Gym, right?
Gym.
It's in the gym.
But it has a heating...
It's in the new gym space, or the, yes, not the old gym.
But it has a heating component. If those pipes freeze, whether it's in one location, it's a big problem.
Yeah. The problem is in the two overhead air handlers that hang off the ceiling on either side of the gym. One broke at the very end of last year and is irreparable. So, we were hopeful to, to run through that one, but we realized the one that's still working is really like being triaged just to keep it up and running. And if that one were to fail, we would have no heat in there, and then we would be looking to have to bring in possibly auxiliary heat, which is gonna come at a significant expense. And ultimately, those two are gonna need to be changed anyway. The good news is, when they ran the geothermal wells, they ran the futures into that space. Our plan was always to retrofit that space for new equipment down the road, so this is really expediting that process. So, these new units will cover both heat and cooling using the geothermal wells. And I know that every year, we rent a portable air conditioning unit for the moving up ceremony in that space. So, now with these new air handlers in place and the futures already run for the geothermal, that space will have new units serving both heat and cooling from here on out.
That's great. And is the state generally responsive quickly to this kind of thing? I mean, I don't remember this happening before, so I don't know.
They have different types of emergencies. Certainly, they know that this is the season, and when we go to turn them on now, we're seeing problems. So, it's more likely that they will deem it what they call a local emergency, not a true emergency, which means we would have to go out and like fix it tomorrow. We don't, so they would call it what they, a local emergency. So, they wanna review the plan first, and just from my perspective, it looks, it looks good, but I don't wanna say until we get to the next meeting whether or not they're gonna put it through, so.
Okay.
Tonight is a special night because the governor of the state of New York, each year establishes a proclamation to recognize school board members. As we know, when you are a school board member, you are an unpaid volunteer in your community. You're committing a civic, and you're committing yourself to a civic duty and responsibility that is significant. And so, I'm going to read the proclamation. Whereas each year, School Board Recognition Week is observed by the more than 700 school boards in school districts throughout the Empire State, and whereas our state's public education system is designed to meet the educational needs of all children and to empower them to become competent, productive contributors to society and an ever-changing world, and whereas members of local school boards are dedicated to children, learning, and community, and devote many hours of service to elementary and secondary public education as they continually strive for improvement, excellence, and progress in education, recognizing that all children can be successful learners, especially when education is tailored to the individual needs of the child, and whereas local school board members are strong advocates for public education, are responsible for communicating the needs of the school district to the public and the public's expectations to the district by working closely with parents, educational professionals, and other community members to create the educational vision we all hold for today's students and those in the future, and whereas the members of New York State's local school boards respond to the educational needs of the communities they serve and help ensure the solid foundation of our school system, in so doing, these leaders help strengthen our state's educational system and improve future prospects for our children. And whereas during October 22nd to 26th, 2018, special activities and programs will be held in communities across New York State in observance of School Board Recognition Week, it is fitting to join in acknowledging the commitment and contributions of members of local school boards. Now, therefore, I, Andrew M. Cuomo, Governor of the State of New York, do hereby proclaim October 22nd to 26th as School Board Recognition Week, and it is signed by the Governor of the State of New York. I personally want to thank the Board of Education for their support of the educational vision that I have, I had hoped to, to bring to the Putnam Valley School District and to share with my colleagues here in the schools, the administrators, the teachers, all of these, teacher assistants, everyone, the aides, the monitors, the people in the lunch program, everyone here, the bus drivers, we're all working together to support student learning and student well-being. And I have to say that the role of a school board member is complex. The decision-making is complex. The deliberations are complex. There's a lot of emotional content as well. People are not just intellectually bound here in this project, but there's the emotional commitment that people have. And so, one, I ask of all, the empathy and the support of our school board members in the kinds of decisions they have to make and the thinking that goes into the process. There is a tremendous commitment to fiscal responsibility that is, you know, always in the back of everyone's mind because we don't wanna burden our taxpayers. On the other hand, there is that tremendous desire for our students to do so well, as we saw this evening with our science research students and what they are able to accomplish. So, this is why we're here, and I want to thank the board members for what they've done for our students. I have certificates that... Jeannie, would you give those? Would you mind, Jeannie, just giving them to our board members, and again, recognizing the service that they do for our community? As we talk about school board membership, we think about civics, and the role of civic education is now more and more emphasized at the state level. And for our Superintendent's Conference Day, we are hoping to have a special project which will give students an opportunity to have input, teachers to have opportunity to have input, and to create a conversation about what America is, what America means to all of us in our community. It's a project that will allow students to look at historical documents, literature, poetry, art, to come up with an idea, you know, how they feel, what they feel is the American idea, and how this particular quote or piece of art or writing actually reflects that idea. Those will be, those ideas will be given to the teachers to look at, and there will be conversations among the teachers to determine which of these ideas they would wanna post, and we hope to have the school filled with the posting of these ideas about what America means to all of us. And it's on, of course, Election Day, which is, of course, one of our most important rights that we have in this country, to vote. So, it's a way to bring civic edu, to bring the student voice into the whole process with the teachers, and we hope it will be a powerful experience for everyone. That is just one part of our Superintendent's Conference Day. We also have a program on social emotional learning and curriculum work K-12. I wanted to say a couple of words just about the community lunch here at the high school, how it's become such a positive experience with students. There are clubs meeting, there are, they had an open mic here, which they're going to continue. The students are planning another one. There's a lot of physical activity in the caf, in the cafeteria, no, in the gym. And it's become a great way for students to have positive interactions. So, it seems to be working quite well. I also wanted to comment on a couple of visits I made to classrooms where I learned a great deal about some of the interesting work being done by students, the capstone project at the eighth grade, where the students are beginning to learn how to do research on subjects of their choice that will help them as they move to the high school, working on the science research program for those who wish to do so, and also to work on the IB program. And there was an IB information night this, this week to help parents in the district understand what the International Baccalaureate was about and how we are preparing their students for that. Both, you know, all three of us, Jeremy, I, and Natalie, had an opportunity to interview students this week who are in the applied math class that is run by Mr. Baker. And the students were basically, it was a job interview. We were conducting a job interview with these students. And it was, I think for all of us, a very impressive experience. When I asked one of the students, one of the students wants to be a state trooper, and when I asked the student what he thought the most important attribute of a state trooper was, he said it was compassion for others. And I said, "This is really a beautiful message about what our students are learning and thinking in this school district." He saw the big picture for law enforcement, and it was, it was excellent. We had a student who had been a dancer and was a dancer, and how he wanted to be an earth science teacher because of a teacher he had here in eighth grade who showed him what the universe was about. And so, this was the kind of experience we had with our students this week. I also want to move to another topic, and can I ask you, Mr. Mahoney, to find that link? We lost a teacher who had been here for many years just a week ago, and there was really quite a, an outpouring at the calling hours of students from the past and current students, teachers. There was a tremendous showing at the funeral, and Mr. Travacchino was very well-loved by students. And in fact, I wanted to share with the public the video that our students made of Mr. Travacchino, and I think he represents the teachers we wanna celebrate in our school district, so.
Well, my personal approach was, and I hope you know this because you're one of my students, my first approach is to establish a relationship with a person, a rapport, you know, a rapport. Not like we tell you to come home with somebody, is it a good relationship or bad? Do you know each other's habits? Do you know each other's, when they're joking, when they're serious? And if you can establish a rapport and a connection, that's basically connecting with a person. So, if a teacher connects with a student, that's what I try to do. That's my number one priority, my first priority, connecting. If I connect with the student, and we have a good rapport, now we got the basis for great. I can help that kid because that kid won't hesitate to come to me. That kid won't hesitate to take advice. That kid, that kid won't hesitate to, if I ask them to study harder or focus on this or that, I would hope they would listen more because they're connected with me. Life is about connections. When you connect with people, you got step one conquered.
So, we wanted to thank the students for putting together this beautiful video, and we can see the legacy that a teacher leaves based on the communication he has, the relationships he has and he's made with his students. And I have to also thank all of the members of our staff who were involved in all of the processes of the crisis team that met, the, all the arrangements, the ability to cover classes when needed, to work with students who were grieving, teachers who were grieving. It really was one of those moments where the community comes together, and I think the video that the students made is a fitting tribute to, it expresses, again, their voice, their feelings, their emotions about how a teacher has impacted their lives. So, we want to just mention our sympathy to the family, our condolences at this loss, and just remember Mark Travacchino.
Thank you for sharing that, Dr. Wells. Dr. Wells, did she steal some of your thunder and talk about some of the things you were gonna talk about?
I now know how she feels having to go after me every week. I want this reversed back the other way next meeting.
Okay. I'll take care of it.
So, I was actually gonna start on the same topic, so it actually sort of worked out. I did wanna recognize the passing of Mark, and what I really wanted to focus on was the fact that in moments of tragedy, it's amazing to see how people come together. And in the short time I've been here in Putnam Valley, this is now the third tragedy, tragedy spanning three different buildings, and the number of people who were here on Saturday night and back here on Monday, which was a holiday, and the amount of work that was accomplished in those short days by people who were grieving themselves was pretty remarkable. The amount of support we had here at the high school on Tuesday, so that was the first day back for students, and the funeral. We had people from, Geneva Shreda came over from the elementary school. We had teachers and administrators from the middle school, and we had teachers who agreed to stay back here in the high school so their colleagues could go to the funeral, work essentially eight straight periods. So, students had familiar faces in front of them, so they had someone to talk to and to know that kids were being taken care of. So, I really wanted to recognize the support of the entire district, the administrators, the teachers, and really students. Students stepped up and took care of each other. So, it was a tough time. It was a tough day, but we got through it, and it's, when you reflect on those things, it's always nice to think about how well everyone came together to get something done. So, I also wanted to mention that. From the facilities project, I know last meeting, Ms. Figarella talked a little bit about the five fast facts, so that has been wrapped up in a nice document and posted on our website, bcst.org/facilities. Also added as of today is an FAQ document. We started collecting questions from members of various committees and writing answers to those questions on an FAQ document, so I believe there's 12 on there. It'll be a dynamic document, so we will continue to add questions as they arise. But really, our goal is to make sure that accurate information is available to anyone who is seeking to find it. So, that information is now available on the website as well. I wanted to provide a quick update on our search for a new middle school assistant principal. The posting went out last Friday. As of last I checked, we were over 70 applications already, and the posting will actually be open for another entire week. So, we began to comb through some of those resumes and identify lists of individuals who we'd like to bring in for screenings. So, we remain optimistic, although whoever takes that position will have big shoes to fill. We were hopeful that we'll find a successful candidate who will continue to help our school grow. There was a TCI training refresher, so that's district-wide what's going on. Ms. Casey and Mr. Turner are the trained facilitators of that. So, we had to recertify our teachers, and that training went on for last Friday and Monday. And the Harlem Wizards visited Putnam Valley. So, I could remember, I think the last time I played organized basketball was against the Harlem Wizards in 2001. Needless to say, I haven't gotten any better over that time. But it was a lot of fun, really enjoyed it. There was a tremendous amount of work Ms. Alvano and Ms. Wilson put into organizing it. I know Ms. Alvano crossed the country twice to visit her new grandchild and got back for the game. So, it was a lot of fun playing with the team and, and really just interacting with the students and the parents in the stands. So, I really enjoyed it, and I'm looking forward to doing it again. The elementary schools had a couple professional development sessions since we last met. They had a guided reading professional development with Jackie Levine from Putnam Northern West Chester Bosse's, and math professional development with Peggy Golden. So, I actually stopped in both of them, and teachers were extremely engaged and gave extremely positive reviews about what they accomplished during that time. The middle school held building steering committee meetings and technology committee meeting. The high school, the happy report, the STEM room is finally complete after our once-broken desks have been replaced with new operational ones. The Studio 116 is up and running, and the clip that we just saw was built in part, I believe, by the ninth show. So, that's the production class that takes place within that space under the guidance of Mr. Mahoney. IB informational evening was held for middle school parents. I came here last evening. It was very well-attended. In fact, part of my job was to keep taking seats out of the back and setting them up into new rows to have room for everyone.
Glad you earned your doctorate for that.
What?
You have a doctorate, and that's how we use you. Appreciate it.
It's a full-service operation. I greeted people and handed out papers, too.
Excellent. Excellent.
But I want to compliment Ms. Nturi and Mr. Mello, who did a fabulous job of giving information and then being available for questions and answers. So I think everyone left much more informed. And the, along the IB route, our authorization application was successfully submitted, and we're expecting a site visitation this winter. And to begin, hoping to be, to begin to offer the courses in the fall. And I also wanted to just mention how much fun the student interviews were. It was, it was nice to, to be working directly with students and getting to know them better. And then I went up to the class afterwards and talked to the whole class. And they were very, they had a lot of compliments about how much they felt they got out of it, so that made it feel even better. That's it, thanks.
Do we have anything from the PTA or PTSA? Moving then on to new business. Mr. Farrar, can you start us off with number one?
Resolved the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve longevity as per document number 6119, graduate course credits as per document number 6219, and in-service courses as per document number 6319 for salary purposes referenced. Documents attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Number two?
Resolved to accept the revenue and accounts receivable internal audit report completed by Acum Partners, the district's internal auditors, in April of 2018 as per document number 64/19 attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Number three?
Resolved to accept the fiscal external audit report as presented to the board at the October 4th, 2018 meeting, including extra classroom activity funds and management letter for the fiscal year ending June 2018 for the Putnam Valley Central School District as per document number 65/19 attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting, completed by Bennett Kielson Scorch DeSantis, a division of O'Connor Davies Muns and Dobbins, the independent external auditors for the district.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Number four?
Resolved the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to adopt 2018-19 Board of Education goals as per document 66/19 attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments? Those were the goals we reviewed earlier.
And we'll have the amendment done.
And the, the amendment, oh yeah, as amended, which would include the recruitment and hiring of a middle school assistant principal. And all of these goals will be posted on the website. All in favor?
Aye.
Number five?
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to accept the resignation of Niko Mangieri, the middle school assistant principal from the district effective November 25th, 2018 as per document number 67/19 attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Number six?
Resolved on recommendation of the superintendent of schools to accept the resignation of Mary Kay Cohen from her position as varsity coach for girls soccer as per document number 70/19 attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Number seven?
Resolved on recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint Will Corano as the school science chemical safety coordinator for the 2018-19 school year at the curriculum rate of pay with a maximum of 25 hours for the year.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Number eight?
Resolved the recommendation of superintendent of schools to appoint Deborah Verdi as a long-term substitute teacher, 19 weeks in kindergarten at the elementary school effective October 19th, 2018 through March 1st, 2019, or sooner at the discretion of the Board of Education at the substitute salary rate of $125. Ms. Verdi holds nursery kindergarten grades one through six permanent certification.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Number nine?
Be it resolved that the resolution approved by the board at the August 16th, 2018 board meeting abolishing 3.35 FTE teaching assistant positions and amended at the board meeting of September 6th, 2018 abolishing 1.35 FTE teaching assistant positions is hereby amended at this meeting to reduce the abolition of positions to 0.35 FTE teaching assistant positions effective October 8th, 2018. And be further resolved, the district clerk is directed to notify the affected employee that his or her position has been reinstated effective October 8th, 2018.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Number 10?
Resolved on recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the 2017-18 district-wide safety plan as per document number 71/19 attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to the consent agenda.
Recommended action resolved to approve the consent agenda items two through nine as presented to the board at this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments?
We are approving CSE/CPSE placements. We're approving additional assignments for Dorothy Franch to teach an ENL student who recently required more services. And we have also approving that Susan Maloney will provide parent trading to discuss IEPs throughout this process. We're approving an educational contract with the Carmel Central School District for one of our students who has special needs and will be going to their school. We're mending the contract with Caliphine School where we have students going, and this gives us the right to add or delete students throughout the year. We're approving an unpaid day for one, for one of our aides. We're approving a substitute athletic trainer to be employed when we need two trainers because there are too many events going on at the same time. We're mending the district club advisor listing, adding advisor for the One Act Play Club, and we're approving additions to the substitute tutor list.
Second. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to open it up to public comment on any topic. Okay.
I, um...
Open up to the board.
I went to the IB session yesterday, and it was well-attended. I was surprised, however...
Wait, can we just stop for a minute? Who seconded that? Because you made the motion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You can't second.
It was seconded twice, actually.
Okay.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure, but it wasn't Barbara.
Right, it was seconded twice.
Yes.
I'm worried here.
So I went to the, my surprise was that it was, I think, majority was middle school parents. When I was taking an audit of the room, it really looked full of middle school parents. Now, you might have high school kids, too, but from the faces I recognized, it was really faces I didn't recognize because they're middle school parents. So I thought that was very interesting. But it was well-done. Obviously, the two of them, Mr. Mello and Ms. Nturi practiced because they bounced right off of each other very well. It was very well-done. They answered a bunch of questions, and then there was more questions afterwards. The one thing that I want to get to, I mean, the, the idea of, and it's not necessarily a fair question because Ms. Nturi or Matt Mello is not here, but the idea of the rapidity of implementation. We, we are gonna, you know, we're gonna, we're out there as a candidate, they're going to come in the winter, and they're going to say yea or nay at that point. If they say yea, the course catalog goes right into high gear. I, I know the teachers are already, you know, they're pre, they're pre-training for all this stuff. I do want to know, you know, I didn't, I was not aware of the, now this won't take place for a couple more years, the extended essay mentorship. I don't know how that will work contractually. I don't know that that's been dealt with. And, and the financing and budget implications of that additional workload for, for every one of those students. Now granted, starting out, that's going to be a very small pie of people probably mirroring science research as far as five or six starting to do the extended essay and then moving on. And the other interesting piece that came up was the issue of Mandarin of, and I think that's probably why a lot of the middle schoolers' parents were here yesterday, because with Mandarin, there's, there's not going to be an IB piece to that, as I understand it. And if they want to get a language, they have to try another language that they've not taken before for IB, if I'm remembering this correctly. So not, and, and there was concern that Mandarin would not be carried all the way through. And the conversation yesterday talked about definitely, well, definitely possibly for ninth and 10th grade, but after that, we, it was not very clear. So maybe Dr. Luft, you can speak to that.
Sure. So the first piece, we've had preliminary conversations, and we'll certainly, we will follow up, and before anything becomes, it comes before the board. But we have, I think we have a pretty good plan for the mentors and coordinators and stuff like that without really increasing any costs. So that piece is yet to come. For the Mandarin piece, the, the problem is, is we cannot offer Mandarin through IB. With the distance learning model we have, they will not accept that as an alternative. But our hope is, depending upon student interest, that Mandarin could continue to be offered straight through 12th grade for those students who are interested in pursuing it. But if you want to, if you're a Mandarin student who also wants to do the IB diploma, you would have to also take Abenicio, which is like a first-timer language. So if we have a current eighth grader who's in Mandarin now, and they decide they want to continue with Mandarin, nine, 10, 11, 12, that's fine, they can continue to do so as long as we have enough student interest to continue running the program. But in 11th grade, they would also have to take Spanish or French Abenicio. So it's, Spanish is a newcomer or a first-timer, and they would take that for two years, and that would count as a standard-level course towards their IB diploma. So...
Because you had to have a language component to be able to get the diploma.
Correct. So they can take the standard level in the language and higher levels in other areas, but they can still continue to take Mandarin throughout the process to, to master the language. It just won't be technically attached to the, the program itself.
Of course, there is always a possibility that if we have enough students taking Mandarin, that you have a, a large number in the, who are taking it, as they get into the, a high school level, they could be a Mandarin teacher. I'm going to a presentation at Bosse's this week, or, no, I'm sorry, the 30th. And Bosse's is looking to possibly sponsor an, actually, a Mandarin immersion program with, with teaching assistants working with teachers. So, you know, there are other possibilities that could occur with Mandarin. And in reality, of all the, you know, it is a language that fits very well with the IB philosophy and with the global citizenship philosophy. So, you know, I think we're still, I, that's certainly something that was still being explored, because this particular online program is not an online program like the ones that are normally thought of. It's with a teacher. So I think part of this is exploring with IB, understanding what the program is that we have. And once we can get accepted as an IB school and, and move into that, I think there could be more discussions as well.
Can I just clarify? I'm, I'm going to make an assumption that it does meet Regents' diploma language requirements. The, the, okay.
Yes, the Regents' requirements are embedded within either standalone Regents' classes or as part of SL, the first year of SL classes.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else from anybody on the board? Okay, then, at this time, I would like to convene an executive session for the, to discuss the medical, financial, credit, or employment history of, do I have to count? How many?
Fourteen particular persons have one personnel matter.
Fourteen individuals, person, and one person, matter of personnel. The medical, financial, credit, or employment history of 14 particular persons or corporations or matters leading to the appointment, employment, promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal, or removal of a particular person of a corporation, after which time no further business will be conducted.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everyone.
Everybody get out and vote.